Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Land acknowledgement, but we'd like to begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather today is the land traditionally used by the Yanashanabe, Hodnashone, and Chanotan people. We acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge and philosophies of the indigenous peoples with whom we share this land today. Are there any declarations of a pecuniary interest in accordance with Municipal Conflict of Interest Act? Saying none. We have delegations, so I'll need a motion that Council of the Township of Wellesley, and it's not Kristin Hader, and Teresa Bish's delegations. Got a motion, Council Seven, Council Wagner, all in favor, and that's carried. So we'll call Kristin Hader to the
Good evening. Members of Wellesley Township Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Christine Hader, thank you for allowing me in Grace's absence. I'm here representing the Committee for the Christmas Time in Wellesley Parade, an event that's been part of our community for 21 wonderful years, so we are 22nd. And it's just tradition that brings joy to the township as well as festive spirit. Before I proceed, I want to take a moment to express our gratitude to the township for all the assistance you've provided over the years, your support's been invaluable, ensuring safety and success of our parade, and we truly appreciate your commitment to our community. Today, we are respectfully requesting $300 from council towards the expense of this year's parade. Our largest cost, approximately $1,090, is dedicated to ensuring we have the police presence for safety, traffic control during this event. This investment is vital to maintain security and enjoyable atmosphere for all attendees. We believe that this parade not only celebrates the holiday season, but also strengthens our community bonds and encourages local participation and showcases the spirit of Wellesley Township. We understand the importance of every penny in our township budget and appreciate the challenges you guys face in allocating funds. However, your support will ensure that this wonderful event continues to provide joy to Wellesley Township residents. So, thank you once again for your support and for considering our request.
Okay, I'll just hang up there for a minute, see if there's any questions. I think we're prepared to look at this, questions? No questions? So, we've done this before for another group, so I think our clerk has a motion prepared.
So the motion will read that the Council of the Township of Wellesley approve a $300 donation to the Christmas Time in Wellesley Parade Committee for the 2025 Christmas Parade to be funded from the donation account.
Mover, Council Brick, can I have a second? Council Seven, any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you all very much.
And then Teresa.
Evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm representing the Apple Butter and Cheese Festival Committee tonight. On September 29th, the festival committee was approached by a member of the Township of Wellesley Fire Rescue requesting financial support for the planting of an urban orchard as part of the Apple Bomb Challenge. Do you guys all know what the Apple Bomb Challenge is? Well, let me explain. I looked it up, okay. I'm gonna read this, though. And I apologize if I say any of the German words wrong. I may have that background, but that doesn't mean I speak it. The Apple Bomb Challenge is a social media nomination type of challenge, mostly active in Germany. The key features are that a group, often a volunteer fire brigade, is nominated by another group to take part. The nominated group has one week to plant an apple tree. They record or file the tree planting and share it, often via social media. And I encourage everyone to look at the Wellesley Fire Rescue social media tonight. You'll love it. If they don't fulfill the challenge in time, there is a penalty or forfeit. For example, the group must invite the nominating group to a social event like a grill evening or get together. After completing, the group usually nominates several others to repeat the challenge. Elchen Fire Department in Germany is located in the sister city to Perth East in Naresheim, Germany, and they set the challenge to Canada. Our Township of Wellesley Fire Rescue was nominated by the Millerton Firefighters Association. So, so far, our firefighters have purchased and planted 12 fruit trees in the orchard, so they have completed the challenge, but are requesting the funding for those trees can come from the Wellesley Apple Butter and Cheese Festival Reserve. The ABC Committee voted to donate up to $1,500 to the Wellesley Fire Department for the planting of the orchard with council approval. Under the terms of reference for the ABC Festival, projects are to benefit as many residents as possible within the Township of Wellesley. Further, the council's committees' responsibility are to recommend for the distribution of funds that shall meet the needs of the township. This donation was not included in our 2025 approved budget, so I'm here asking council to decide if a donation should be made to the Township of Wellesley Fire Rescue for the purchase of the trees.
Okay, questions? Council Wagner.
How many trees in total?
I think they planted 12. And I think the idea, and correct me if I'm wrong, Garrett, but I think the idea is that, once they mature, it's going to be an orchard that people can go and pick apples at from the communities.
Sorry, Teresa, did you say where they were planted?
Oh, they're planted beside the Wellesley Fire Station. I saw it when I came in tonight. It's very close to the new rec complex as well. It's great.
What kind of apples are they?
Well, now, good thing I brought the invoice here. I thought we'd asked. Okay, so there's Ginger Gold, a Royal Gala, a Freedom Apple, an Andrew Pear, Fireside Apple, Gold Rush Apple, Pink Pearl Apple, Sweet Cherry, another Sweet Cherry, a White Lady Peach, and another Peach Seedling, and another Pear Tree.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, any other questions? I think our clerk also has a motion prepared for this one.
That the Council of the Township of Wellesley approve a donation in the amount of $1,500 from the Apple Butter and Cheese Festival account to the Township of Wellesley Fire Department Station 3 for the planting of an urban orchard.
A mover, Council Brick, seconded by Council Hurkett. Any further discussion? All in favor? And that's carried.
Thank you very much.
Public recreation, Council Wagner.
I don't believe there are any service board reports, there's nobody logged in online. Nope, okay. No staff reports? Do I have a director's update?
Thanks, Council Wagner, I do have a short update tonight. Fall programming is underway with many new programs being offered. Some classes are filling up quickly while there are still spots available, some other classes. Residents can visit our website to see what programs are available and to sign up for the ones they wish to. Public skating started this past weekend in both of our arenas with the sponsorship from the Paradise and District Lions Club. All public skatings in the St. Clement's Arena will be free admission this year. At the Bill Geese Recreation Center, we have 15 sponsored skates from local businesses at this point, so the remaining skates will be, that are not sponsored, will be $2 per person. The new front desk operating hours are, the operating hours have been expanded, I should say, at the front desk of the rec complex. The hours from October till mid-April will be Monday to Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. These hours will be covered by full-time and/or part-time employees. Staff will be able to assist residents in memberships, rentals, and other recreation inquiries. Outdoor washrooms will begin to be closed down in the next few weeks as staff prepare to winterize them. And lastly, as council may be aware, this past Saturday evening, the Apple Jacks game was canceled due to a small chunk of ice that popped out along the boards of the rec complex. I've reviewed the refrigeration logbooks and the ice thickness logbooks and can report back that there was nothing unusual that caused this to happen. Staff did have the hole filled in and frozen within an adequate amount of time, but it is the referee's discretion whether to cancel a game or not if they feel that the ice quality is not safe and the ref made that decision. No other ice times were lost and the Apple Jacks will make this game up at later date. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, that is it for recreation.
So there's staff presentation.
Okay, we have a staff presentation. I invite Steve Weaver and Evelyn Thomas of GSP Group, re the former Wellesley Arena and Community Center lands.
Thank you, Chair Brick, and members of council. We have put together a few slides just to summarize the results of step one of the process of reimagining the Wellesley Arena and Community Center lands. My name is Steve Weaver and I'm a planner with GSP Group, and Evelyn Thomas is here with me as well. She's an urban designer with our group. Next slide, please. First of all, I want to thank your staff, very dedicated to this process and great help during the consultation process and a very organized group to arrange to talk to many of your constituents, which was really interesting process. You have a lot of passionate folks in your community who were quite interested in this, both representing interest groups and residents in general, so that was great to see. And then I've introduced our team as well. And I do want to thank all the people from the community that participated, as well as yourselves, for your interest and input to the process. The overall purpose of step one for this process is really to lay the foundation for coming up with some options in the next step. We wanted to, before we got into starting to draw things on the map or identifying some potential layout options or repurposing of the site or buildings, we wanted to get back to the basics of what are the principles, what are the overall words and phrases people would use to create a vision for guiding the future use of the land. And next slide. So the three main components of the overall scope of step one were to do some data gathering. We looked at your official plan and zoning by law, we looked at all the available history and information about the site, you know, visited the site, confirmed the parking count, confirmed the attributes of the existing buildings, past agreements, and so forth. And also became very familiar with the current programming of the site through the user groups in terms of the use of the ball diamonds, the general use of the park space, the parking that supports that, and all those elements. Most importantly, the process was a conversation with the community and all your interest groups. So we did have a couple of open houses, one at the Bill Geese Rec Center and one in St. Clement's Community Center on May 7th and 8th. And we had a good turnout to those. And we did an online survey as well from May through June, and we attended the Backyard BBQ event at the, towards the end of June as well, with some panel boards and some information available for people to drop by and talk to us. The main outcome of this step, as I mentioned, is really drafting those guiding principles which we're here to present tonight and which are summarized in our report, as well as the covering staff report. We used this graphic at the open houses and through the online engagement site as well, just to illustrate visually the overall steps, combining steps one and two. So again, those three main tasks in step one were gathering the data, becoming familiar with the site, getting the historical context, having that conversation with the community, and then doing some analysis of all that input to come up with some guiding principles. Step two, which is the recommendation for the path forward from here, is really more about actually then getting into the nitty-gritty of the site and determining what some of the actual options are if you were to draw them out and consider the implications of, how would that use, why would that option impact the community, the neighborhood, the financial impact of that, and ultimately come back to you with a preferred preliminary option for your consideration, which could ultimately then form a path going forward or a strategy for any future investments in the site, for future partnerships, for other initiatives and those kinds of things. Yeah, next slide. So you're familiar with the site, I won't spend a lot of time talking about the context. The larger building in the middle of the green area is the former arena, which has been closed for some time. There are some solar panels on the roof still under a lease with the company that installed those panels, and then the smaller building to the southwest of that is the former community center, Community Hall Building. As we emphasize to the community, and I'll reiterate now, this process was not about reimagining the land shown in the hatched red pattern. That's there to stay for the foreseeable future as we understand it, with the ball diamonds still being well-used and the soccer fields, as well as the park features. So the focus was on the green area primarily, which is about three acres, and then also recognizing there's a strip of land which could be an opportunity to connect the two public roads, Maple Leaf Street and Catherine Street, together in the future, but could also form part of the reimagining of that overall four-acre area when you combine the green and the yellow. The area contextually, as you know, is surrounded primarily by lower-density residential uses. One of the key strengths we heard from the community, then why I think it shaped some of the input we received, is how walkable the site is and how easy it is for people from within Wellesley Village in particular to get there. And that does form a bit of an outdoor and formerly indoor hub for people locally to walk to various community activities, recreation, and events. Next slide, please. We had a really great response rate to the online survey with over 400 surveys received, more than 80 attendees at the two public open houses, a number of online comments through the engagement site as well, and over 10 interested organizations, some with as many as seven or eight representatives, came and spoke with us as well. And then we did have a number of people drop by our booth at the Backyard BBQ, and we went around the event as well and talked to other organizations that were there. And so the next few slides will just summarize some of the input that we received. The overall, there were different perspectives on what some of the options could be for the site in the future, whether that would be purely municipal-driven ownership or whether that would be some kind of hybrid public-private partnership or whether a private, a more private-oriented land ownership would be possible. But overwhelmingly, most people preferred keeping the land in some kind of public ownership with public access. And about half supported making sure that it stayed in some kind of outdoor recreational or combination of public indoor and outdoor recreational or community use. There were obviously some people who recalled its past use for festivals and that it was used again just this summer or recently for the ABC Festival. And people ranked special events as one of the key priorities for the site. And yeah, you can go to the next slide, that's fine. Some of the ideas that were identified or visions that people had for the site were making sure that it's multi-use, that there are some needs identified in the village in particular, such as the opportunity to create a new library space, recognizing some of the issues with the older buildings that the library is in currently as it relates to accessibility and just not being a modern library space, that there are some childcare needs that people identify that aren't necessarily met in the community today and with future growth, that's anticipated to grow. Seniors and the ability to access programming and age-in-place were other priorities identified, and of course, again, special event space, supporting your key events in the community. Accessibility was identified as a really important, a very important aspect of any future reuse of the site and maintaining sufficient parking as well, not only for whatever use becomes of that space, but also for the park itself. In terms of some of the values, again, that community orientation was identified as being very important as opposed to say a private use that was exclusive to the people who either lived or worked at the site or used the services. Being safe and comfortable, having some elements of a sustainable design, and of course, being financially viable. People recognize that, you know, the municipality is running a significant newer recreation facility in a new location now. And so you have to think about both the capital and operating impacts of any reimagining of the former site, you know, how it would be staffed, what the annual maintenance and upkeep requirements are, and just the cost to change the use of the site. A couple of other notable responses there as well, supporting local needs and again, multi-use flexibility had moderate support, and then endeavoring to find some partnership models, so it's not just the township trying to provide what the community needs, but working with other service providers, other opportunities to fund and maintain the facility were considered as well. And next slide. So, in terms of some of the future directions for the site, the majority of respondents disagreed with the concept of selling the land to help offset the cost of the new rec complex. 50% strongly agreed that, again, maintaining public ownership and repurposing for recreational or community use was preferred. And then there was lower amounts of agreement for repurposing or rebuilding within the existing buildings. And 50% strongly disagreed with selling or transferring the running of the land or the facilities to a separate organization or business. And next slide. So in terms of design features, this was another topic area we explored through the online survey. Again, accessibility featured prominently in the responses. Maintaining a balance of built facilities and public green space and landscaping was also identified as a priority. And again, sufficient parking for visitors and if there's a residential aspect to the project in the future that parking needs to be addressed as well. Energy efficiency and outdoor seating or other mentions in the online survey as well. And next slide. So for some of the land use preferences, again, 43% ranked repurposing the site for special events, festivals, or community uses as their top choice. So you're starting to see that theme again become the most favored option. Mixed use and people had different ideas of what that meant to them were also ideas that were raised, such as, again, housing a potential daycare, library, youth services, and that was typically the number one or number two preference. Other ideas included some support for pools and aquatics, indoor event venues, preserving green space, and commercial uses or seniors housing also received some mixed feedback. There was a lot of emphasis, though, about managing the traffic, that it isn't a low-density residential neighborhood, keeping it scaled appropriately to the size of the site in the neighborhood context, and leveraging that walkability of the site, so that does continue to serve the community in a very walkable location. With respect to building height, a specific question we asked was how tall would people think should be considered for if a new building were constructed on the site? And a maximum building height of two stories was the top answer, followed closely by up to four stories. Sorry, three stories and then four stories, and going higher than that received limited support. And next slide. So some of the key themes, I mentioned already that there were a number of respondents who referenced an interest in indoor or outdoor pool option. We did look carefully at that based on your previous assessments from a recreational standpoint. You did the 2014 Parks, Recreation, and Culture Strategic Master Plan, which looked at that, and then again, the 2024 Recreation Master Plan. As we know, an indoor pool or even an outdoor pool quickly becomes not only the most expensive capital facility you might build, but also by far the most expensive to operate of any recreational facility that is typically provided. And you do need a certain critical mass of population to support that in terms of adequate use for that cost and also to make sure that you have the staffing to support the programming and all the expertise that you need to run such a facility. So we don't often see communities of your size providing a dedicated indoor pool or outdoor facility. There are some exceptions to that in certain communities, and we did reference to people who raised this issue the proximity to much of Wellesley Township in terms of the Realmont complex and other options that are available in the region. But we did want to make sure that we specifically mentioned the fact that that was raised by a number of residents, but they, many understood that, you know, that's just not in the future planning based on your past initiatives. Another example was, again, a key driver for the future of the site is preserving the site as a community anchor. And that goes back to, again, its central location, its historical use for serving the community and the existing plan that exists there. Yeah, that keeping some form of community use was the priority. And next slide. There was some support for using and retrofitting the existing buildings that was explored, particularly with respect to the community center. Some groups mentioned, for example, that the new gymnasium is not ideal for certain functions such as performances and theater use and those kinds of things, whereas the former community hall better serve some of those aspects. People also had some nostalgia about events they've attended over the years, you know, private or public in that former community hall. And I think you've all experienced that in your own lives, that, you know, being in a gymnasium is a bit of a different experience than being in a historical community hall. So there were some considerations around what would be required to make that existing former community center building usable again and open for certain uses that aren't already being accommodated at the new rec center. So that's something that there was interest in looking at further. There were, of course, concerns about if, you know, housing were part of a future reuse of the site that that building isn't too tall or scaled too large or creating parking issues or neighborhood concerns. And then, again, just, again, highlighting the infrastructure and accessibility of the site that it's got some real potential for complementary community use and services. So, to wrap all that up, we considered all that input and reviewed it with staff and came up with a series of seven guiding principles to kind of high-level statements to guide us going forward in the next step. And the first is about public stewardship and recreational-led use. So keeping the land in public ownership, as we heard through the community conversations, and prioritizing public recreational and community uses. So that's still pretty broad, and it gives us some things to think about in step two as to what the options might look like for that, but does narrow it a little bit towards, again, what the community identified as the preference, and that's public recreational and community-oriented uses. That kind of dovetails into the next guiding principle, which is that it is community-oriented, that it's inclusive and safe, and ensuring it's welcoming and comfortable for all ages and abilities. And along with that, that it has universal accessibility. So one thing that was highlighted with the old buildings, and of course, one of the reasons you sometimes need to build new is that old buildings don't keep up with the standards of accessibility and sustainability and that kind of thing. So if existing facilities are repurposed or retrofitted or new facilities are built, of course, accessibility needs will need to be addressed. There was lesser reference, but still a highlight on maintaining some year-round activation. Of course, the site, when the arena was still operating, had a lot of winter use indoors and a lot of summer use outdoors, and opportunities to continue or build upon the opportunity for a walkable site that's got something happening on a year-round basis. Both periodic events and everyday use examples was identified as a guiding principle. And next slide. I kind of already referenced this one, but not duplicating anything you already have. The new rec center was seen as a very important objective as well. So ensuring that, you know, you're not splitting up your staff resources, your operational resources, or pointing the community in different directions for the same kind of activity, but rather trying to complement and build upon what you already have at the rec facility by providing something that isn't met there, for example, more performance-based, cultural, or social gathering-type events that can't be addressed at the new facility. that can't be addressed at the new facility. If housing were to be considered, the objective there was to make sure that it's community-serving and meeting a need that the marketplace isn't already meeting. So something for seniors or something affordable or something along those lines uh that is kind of self-managing and self-sufficient. And then again, the last one is more around the design and the scale and making sure that it fits within the neighborhood and recognizes the the limited area that's available on the site, as well as the need to maintain sufficient parking for any future use as well as the existing bald diamonds. I'm sorry, there are three more. Yeah, I've already referenced the parking and operations and supporting events. Financial responsibility and and making sure that things are realistic in terms of their implementation was identified as a guiding principle as well. And along with that, sometimes there's a need to look at community partnerships. And and again, that notion of the township not trying to do it all on its own, but finding those community partners, much like you did at the at the New Billies Recreation Center and Park area. So just to wrap up through the next few slides. Again, step one confirmed a clear community-driven focus for the former Welsley Arena and Community Center land. The the direction being to retain it in public ownership and look at a range of options exploring recreational uh community use and year-round opportunities. Supporting events, festivals and making sure they're accessible, safe and welcoming public spaces uh on a year-round basis. If there are mixed use concepts, look at keeping the community-oriented uses at the ground level of any buildings and looking at other opportunities above that. Keeping the building height within the two to four-story range and addressing current standards as it relates to accessibility, parking and sustainability. And then just the last slide here, summarizing the next steps. So in developing options for the site, we would look to balance the input on township-wide needs as well as the local needs within Welsley Village, the financial responsibility and impact of any reuse of the site and the operational resource needs and sustainability of that. So step two would, as I mentioned, test different options to complement the existing recreation facilities in the township. Emphasizing multipurpose and flexible spaces. Considering capital and operating implications and life cycle as well as community benefits. So there would be two in the next step, should you proceed to go forward with that. Over the next several months, we would work with staff and the community to develop and evaluate two to three concepts to make that a very visual process, including highlighting some precedent images and examples from other places that have done successful retrofits for spaces like this and identifying a preferred option based on evaluating the merits of of those different concepts, primarily using the guiding principles and the input and feedback received from the community and yourselves. And that would culminate in a report back to council at the end of that process. And council could then determine at what level it wants to use that preferred plan as a as a path to go forward, whether there's some immediate steps to implement or whether that's more of a guide for future consideration, or you start investigating partnerships, start identifying financial and other resource needs and planning for that. But the intent is to create a roadmap forward so that you're not taking a shot in the dark when you do decided to make some decisions around that former arena site. So that's my presentation. Thank you very much for your attention and happy to address any questions should you have any.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions of council?
So in your report, it says fifty percent strongly agreed the land should remain publicly publicly owned. Is it safe to say the other fifty percent agreed that it should be sold?
No, so fifty percent strongly agreed. And then there was also an agreed column. And then there were different options of, you know, moving it into private ownership, selling it to that or having a public private partnership. So fifty percent was by far the the top kind of category of answer. And then the rest kind of fell down from there.
Okay. And second question, do you have any idea of what percentage of people brought the idea of retirement housing or seniors housing?
I don't have it off the top percentage-wise from the survey. But at each of the events that we had in person, at least one or two people identified that as something that should be considered, that when we ask the question, well, what are the needs of the community? Most people, their minds automatically would go to recreational needs because that's the history of the site. But you know, a small percentage of people, maybe twenty-five percent of the people that attended the in-person events were open to the concept of housing. And of those, maybe ten to fifteen percent identified it themselves. So we did try to ask people to think outside of recreation and get their reaction to that. But most came with kind of a, they already hadn't set their mind to, this should be something more recreational or community use oriented. Of course, the people we didn't hear from are the future residents of any housing that might be built. And that's always the hard part in assessing the true need for things like seniors housing and that kind of thing. There are some organizations that could be met with in the next step as well to further explore those options. What would that look like in terms of unit type or scale and how much site area would be needed? So I think it is something that should be explored at some level through the next step.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
I don't know, somebody else. So you're gonna present us with two or three concept drawings, I'm assuming. Are they gonna be looking at the entire package, like both buildings? Would you be able to sort of divide divide it in half and say, for example, just leave the community center there? And have a look at that to see what sort of costs would be involved in doing something like that. Would you have that sort of a concept? Or is that something that we would have to discuss and break down at a later date?
I think based on the guiding principles and what was discussed during step one, it would be reasonable to have an option that explores keeping at least one of the existing buildings and reopening and repurposing it. And then maybe an option that involves just new buildings and another one that has a hybrid between a new building and a retrofitted old building. We haven't fully fleshed that out, but we definitely would evaluate an option where we look at, well, what would be the impact and and the need in reopening, say, the community center building, for example.
If I may, would you sort of try and identify what costs would be involved in in maintaining on those buildings?
To the extent that we can, based on existing information and discussions with staff, you know, there were obviously some reasons why these facilities were closed and and there were some issues. We talked about some of those during step one. So it it isn't, we know that it isn't a matter of just unlocking the doors and and putting on the website, the building is open again, that there's there's a little more to it than that. So we would be able to provide you with at least like an order of magnitude estimate of you know, here's the basic to get the facility open and safe, more or less as it was before it was closed. And here's an option where if you wanted to make it more usable and more friendly to the people who are interested in that building, here's what the order of magnitude you might have to invest to do that.
Okay, that's that that will be helpful for sure. When I read through the report, it seemed to me that there was, there was not one item that really stood out that people absolutely had to have. I mean, a lot of this percentages were in the fifty to fifty-five range for various options. Would you not think that's gonna make it offer difficult for this council to make a decision when it comes, when the time comes?
It it's a good point. Like, there wasn't a lot of answers that received, you know, eighty, ninety percent. Not everybody aligned in the same direction. And there is a bit of a split in the community over attitudes around the the future opportunities and how the how the site should be reused in the in the in the future. So we're not going to please everybody with the plan that we ultimately come up with. Hopefully, though, we can narrow that down more specifically, once we start to use images and and plans and and show them what various options to look like.
So when you present these options, do you do the same sort of survey to see which of those would be preferable? So that would narrow it down.
Exactly. Yeah, I think we would do a combination of in-person and online engagement to get reaction to those three concepts. And it wouldn't just be pictures and drawings. It would be, you know, here's a bit of a write-up of what it would be involved in that auction, you know, here's how much space would be allocated to this purpose. Here are some of the resource considerations, not definitive costs, but you know, this one would require some staffing. This would require, you know, the most money and investment in buildings. This one would require a defined partner to work with. So people have kind of as full a picture as we can provide them on. You know, it's look at more than just the the visuals, but also consider the implications of if you went forward with this option, you'd have to do A, B, and C.
So I noticed a percentage of locations where people put their so put their comments out. They seem to be a larger percentage of people that were maybe adjacent to the property. Is that is that, did I read that?
That's right. So a lot of people who took the online survey, you've linked their response data with the postal code. A lot of people were from the immediately Welsley, immediate Welsley Village area and the neighborhood around the former arena and community center specifically. So it's just definitely highlights that it's of greater interest to those who are living in terms of responding to an online survey, at least, I mean, in the immediate vicinity.
Yeah. And then similarly with age, I think you mentioned there are some age levels in there as well. So the older folks, they look into the seniors type of complex, would you? Could we equate that or?
We couldn't necessarily correlate that. We we heard from, you know, definitely not like teenagers or people in their twenties saying we need seniors housing, but people other than seniors specifically referencing that, you know, a lot of people who may have parents or people who live locally who they could see the the need for that. And so it was, there wasn't a specific use or opportunity that we could say, well, only young people are saying that or only old people.
It's nice to see that the two of the most important things that I believe the town needs right now is a proper library. And both of those are on your radar. So yeah, pleased to see that.
Lot of opportunity.
Any further questions? So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh moving over to the staff reports. So P and D fourteen slash twenty twenty-five, the former Welsley Arena and Community Center lands. Summary of engagement and drafting guiding principles. I need a motion that the council of the township of Welsley received the public engagement results with respect to the former Welsley Arena and Community Center lands for information. And further, that the council of the township of Welsley endorsed the draft guiding principles outlined in this report to inform the development of options through for the site through step two of the project. I have a mover. Councillor Wagner, secondary councillor, seven, would staff like to bring anything more forward?
Well, I don't think so. I think Steve did a really excellent job and I I wanted to thank them for their work on on the project to date. It's been, it's been good working with them and they really did get out in the community quite a bit for something like this. And I I think it goes to show some of the feedback that that we got. Just just one thing to point out, Mr. Mayor, about some of the options, you know, we're we're if if the if the motions approved tonight, we'll start right away on working at at some options, but it's quite possible. I I would be surprised if we hit it out of the park with one of those three options. I mean, part of the part of the process is getting more discussion going, having some visuals and 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 really imagining, which is what this is called, what it could look like, right? But it's quite possible. Actually, I would argue that it probably is possible. What will happen is that there'll be elements of different options that people like and some that they don't like. And and there will probably need to be some revisions through that process and maybe another round or something like that. But we can we can stick handle that as we as we go through. So I I I think the 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 way that we're approaching this is it's prudent, it's measured. And and certainly there'll be more opportunity for public engagement as we we go through, because this is a pretty significant piece of property in the township. So that's all, councillor, thank you.
Questions?
So I think one way to mitigate that that kind of a minefield that we might be traveling through would be to and I was glad to see the the concept of financial respectability in there, because I think that that's gonna be that information is gonna be crucial when it comes to making a decision. And if people realize that this is gonna, whatever it may be, is gonna be exorbitant, then, you know, it's sort of it's sort of, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? Their expectations are mitigated a bit, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, and I think our our approach there is, as as Steve had mentioned, is that you know, we're at the the concept phase. So so like it it'll be an order of magnitude type estimate, right? Like, because you you don't, we're not in, you know, detailed development work phase, right? But but yes, we'll have an idea of what what the costing will be for the different different options or different pieces of the puzzle, so to speak.
And how it would be put together. And you mentioned whether we need partners. And once again, who's the ownership of the land? All those things will have to be discussed, I think, in detail when the time comes.
Absolutely.
Further questions?
So if I did my math right, four hundred surveys is about four percent of the population of the township.
I don't want to question your math, councillor.
So anyways, I'm just wondering, as the mayor stated, once these options come forward, if there's the financial implication, would you be open to taking another survey or how would you move forward forward with that?
Yeah, for sure. Like, that was, that's the plan. Some options will be developed and they will do another round of engagement on that, whether that includes probably a survey, like, it seemed to work really well. The responses were pretty good, like four hundred and six responses for for a survey is pretty good for us. That it was more than what was, we received kind of in the first round of of this, right? And another thing to like, I I hope it jumped out in the report, or I'm sure you're already thinking about this is that I mean, this, this is what we're talking about right now is responses, respondents. This, this, this report and this, the summary is about respondents to the survey, right? So that's different than, you know, everybody in the township as a whole, right? So this is, this is, you know, a a certain number of of people, a lot, a lot of them have we known that live in and around the site that have commented on it. And that's understandable, right? You live in and around the site, you're you're gonna take an interest. We fully expect that when we start to put some options on the table, I'm sure that 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 response rate, response rate will broaden across the township. Because, you know, there's, I'm sure people in Lynwood and Hoxville and St. Clement's and Heidelberg and that have opinions on this too, right? So so that's, that's the difference between this, the respondents of the survey and you you know, your choice, your decision at the end of the day, which is what is the best you know, decision for the township based on what the community needs as a whole.
I think it was in your timeline on this, when you're coming back.
Yeah, we we we're, like I said, we're gonna start right away. I think we don't, certainly don't want to rush it. So we're not, we're not we're not putting specific dates on it at this point, but you know, public engagement on something like you kind of work backwards. So public engagement, you don't particularly want to be doing that in Christmas time or right after. Like, I'm thinking that we'll probably work this fall to develop the concepts and work together, collaborate with with GSP and put some things together. And I I would guess that we would probably try and bring something out, you know, early or, you know, early spring. It's better to over, what is it under? I'm, it's better to over, what is it, under, promise and over-deliver uh than uh the other way around. But um, yeah, you don't, you don't particularly want to be doing a significant amount of engagement on something of this magnitude, you know, in December and January, um.
I'm just, I'm thinking probably the ideal if this council could deal with this, because this council has the background and all the affirmations, as opposed to, you know, not that new people can't make decisions.
Right.
You know, same.
Hmm, no, I, we, yeah, we're fully, fully aware and we thought about that. Um, certainly, this would be because it involves a township, property and township land, we we would be in a it it is a lame duck i- item, right, that that you can't, we, there's a certain point in time that we won't be able to make a decision on it. Um, but until then, we'll be moving it quickly through as as best we can. Um, with with the uh, with the hopes of maybe bringing something back, you know, after we've had some, some significant public engagement on it, kind of, you know, maybe late, late spring or something like that. I think that's fair, Rick, I don't know what your thoughts were there.
Yeah, that's kind of uh, my thought was as well, late spring, early summer, that we could come back with uh the results of step two for council's consideration of what that step three might look like.
Step is, so to be determined.
That's the final decision. It it, not necessarily, it really depends on the results of step two, and as Tim had mentioned, there could be a a wide variety of responses of liking bits and pieces of the different concepts, which might lead to a step three of refining the concept again, uh to bring back something a little bit more determinate, which would then be leading towards a final decision. So it's really hard to say at this point, um, Steve, do you have anything to add to that? But uh, I think we really need to get through the step two to know what step three is going to look like.
Yeah, I I would agree with that, and um, so just to put a finer point on it, like the end of step two, it doesn't, it's not a conclusive shovels in the ground kind of step, um, you would have some recommendations to close that gap between the end of step two and when you could put shovels in the ground or make some decision about reopening a building or renovating a building or building a new building or partnering with somebody, so it it's, there's still going to be some more work that's going to need to be done at, from the end of step two before, you know, money is spent on doing something on the site physically. But it'll point you in the direction of where to, to make those investments and give you some recommendations of what initiatives to take to to close that gap, so you can start actually making some changes at the same.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the clerk the question. At what point next year could we be in a duck situation?
Uh, so lame duck will be determined at the close of nominations, which will be August twenty first.
Any further questions? Just uh, the comment, I guess, from my side, so just thank staff and GSP group for your work on this. I think, I know it's of high interest to me and a lot of my constituents being in the community Wellesley. The feedback I heard was the, how you guys conducted your surveys, people felt heard and and it was well done that way, so thank you. And I think this report, like, it it brings that together. And and I know it, it focuses heavily on the community Wellesley, but I think the township as a whole is involved. And I think you'll see more interest when you get some photos there and and like, surveys aren't that fun and exciting, but actual images are and they'll stimulate conversation. So four percent respondents, I mean, that's, we had twenty four percent of people voted, turned out to vote, so four percent of that, that's pretty good. Um, and yeah, just thank you for your work on it, I really think we're going in the right direction with this, so that's just my comments. Uh, okay, so uh, a call to vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Uh, David Director's update.
I do a short one, um councillor, as you know, we've been working on this diligently, that's certainly one project. The other major projects, the official plan, it's moving right along, we should have an update for you. Uh, we're scheduled for uh, uh, the October, the next council meeting. Um, to uh, to have some information for you and then uh, working on uh, our next public engagement for that in November. And um yeah, I think that's all for for tonight, thank you, thank you, any questions to the director? This concludes planning and development.
Okay, we'll move to uh, Road and Bridge, is there?
There's no staff report, so Director's update.
Yeah, excuse me, thank you councillor, I get, uh, so reiterate what I mentioned last month, in the same vein here is uh the tree giveaway scheduled for October eighteenth and twenty fifth, so that is this coming Saturday, uh, eight AM to twelve PM, we have twelve hundred trees between the two weekends, again, similar to how we've done the last few years. Uh, electronics recycling bin uh was a big hit last year, so we're going to do that again. Um, and then Queens Bush Road finally paved, and I think it looked uh really, really good. Uh, the remainder of our asphalt program will be ongoing over the next month or so. This includes a meant line, several large patches on Essendon Strassen Greenwood Hill. The Remembrance Day banners are up in uh all three towns that have Remembrance Day banners as of mid last week. Um, our transportation mobility master plan survey is now closed, but the residents can still provide feedback for anything like active transportation and things like that, uh, that are covered under that master plan. Um, they can provide that feedback on our engage page. The always stop installed, or has been installed now at the regional intersection of Gerber and Nafseger. Our, I bring that up even though it's a regional initiative, because our office did field a lot of phone calls about it over uh, the course of the last week, while I happened to be away on vacation. But I drove it recently and uh, uh, from what I saw, now that they've amended some of the signage and stuff like that, uh, I drove it and it seems, seems to be working good. And I think the fact that it's an always stop now is a, is a huge win for the community. Uh, you may notice there's a lot of line painting going on, most of the zone painting, which is crosswalks and uh stop bars in the town of Wellesley is complete now, there's a lot more to do. Uh, so you'll, you may see them in and around the township. Uh, and then the center lining, old center lining refresher, which is the white and yellow lines, will be happening within the next month or so. Uh, and this time of year, sorry to say it, but we're gearing up for winter. Um, so we have our temps hired for the winter, uh, we're, you know, cleaning out the salt dome, getting it ready to go, different things like that, make sure our equipment's ready. Um, yeah, lots of things like that going on about works, so that's all of that.
Thank you, any question?
Comment or two, come. Just wanted to uh, uh, convey our our gratitude to your staff for the banner project, because I think they worked extremely well with the, those that were involved in organizing that. There was absolutely, it just went very smooth, so uh, you can make sure that they're aware that uh, we appreciate their, appreciate their efforts. So, the other question I had then was, I I noticed on a lot of the sidewalks um, in the town, or there's, they've been identified with uh, you know, white chalk around different holes and are different.
Okay.
Is that going to be dealt with this year or?
So if they weren't uh, cut through the sidewalk inspection program, then we would look at patching those holes with our uh staff internally. So I can follow up and uh, see if there's a work plan regarding sidewalk patching.
There are, but a few that I noticed, a lot of them, I started mentioning.
Yeah, I have one question and a comment, um, the banners, the Remembrance Day banners, do you have a list of where each one goes or is that um, Joe, Joe has it or?
So there is a committee out of Wellesley that uh, provides us with all the banners and some rackets if we need to add additions here and there. They suggest locations
Right.
for us to put them up and we all, we make the final determination, but we try to keep us close to the um the residents that have sponsored those banners, we try to keep us close to their recommended uh locations as possible. Uh, the other in St. Clement's and in uh Linwood, Joe Doherty does run uh those programs. And yes, we do have specific locations for all of the, all of the banners hanging, or all three communities.
Okay, and just for the record, where is the tree giveaway?
The tree giveaway is at the uh administration building here across hill, just like it has been the last few years.
Oh, I thought it was at the rec center uh last year, okay.
No, we, we've held it at the uh, at the admin building here the last few years and it, we've got a good little system there now, so we'll uh, we'll keep going out of there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't know, do we have a um, staff report from property and fire?
I'm not sure.
No.
Good job, easy.
So we'll go um, right to admin and finance, staff reports. AFMP thirty twenty twenty five, this is um, the Paradise and District Lions Club Super Jackpot Bingo Motion Required and a recommendation that the council of the township Wellesley support the Paradise and District Lions Club in their application for a super jackpot bingo lottery license to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario. At motion that effect, move with us, Rick, so I have to hear it, would you want to come on that?
Thank you, uh, so the Paradise and District Mines Club operates a bingo lottery from the St. Clement's Community Center on a weekly basis. The club receives a bingo license from the township and is required to apply for the super jackpot license from the AGCO. Um, municipalities are permitted to issue licenses for certain lotteries, including bingos to a maximum prize value of fifty thousand dollars. This letter has been received uh for several years, requested annually.
Any questions? All the question, all in favor, and that's carried. AFMP thirty one twenty twenty five, investment policy motion required, whereas Ontario Regulation four thirty eight ninety seven mandates the council adopt a statement of investment policies and goals before investing, and whereas strategic investments provide fiscally responsible management of funds, therefore, be it resolved, the council of the township Wellesley approve the investment policy presented in this uh, this report. Uh, if I have a mover please, councillor Wagner, second by councillor Brick. Um, we'll have the director of corporate services bring.
Thank you, mayor, so the purpose of this policy is to guide the investment decisions of the township when funds are not immediately required or in a surplus position to the day-to-day operating requirements. So today, a high-yield bank account is utilized by the township, which delivers an interest rate of approximately three percent. Uh, funds to manage day-to-day activities are managed no differently than the money the township has set aside in reserves to fund future projects and purchases. So this policy will provide the township with the necessary tools to earn a more competitive rate of return uh in an economic environment where the interest rate is forecasted to continue to decline in the coming months. Uh, so next steps would be um, with your approval, uh, would be to partner with a wealth management company with expertise in the public sector space uh, and develop a plan for uh, the funds that we have uh available to us, which aren't immediately required.
But uh, okay, any other que, any questions? So, that's why then.
Sorry, what um, does that look like cost-wise to us then?
So there's no cost, so this would, while there's going to be some um fees uh for managing the portfolio, uh, but ultimately today we earn about three percent in terms of a return on our bank account. Um, we'd be looking for somewhere upwards of four percent return, inclusive of any fees. So about a one percent increase in our um, our return on our, our investments for the township.
Do we know how they base their fees or what their fees might be?
I can, I can look into that right now, we haven't actually selected um, who we're going to work with, so you know, ultimately we will look at that, but right now it's, it it depends on who we partner with.
Okay.
No questions? So I, I have a couple, so money that's held in reserves, is that, that's considered like a sinking fund? If I got that right.
Well, right now we have a lot of money held in, like in reserve, but it's all in our CIBC uh main operating account.
So you're only receiving interest on, from the bank on that?
Correct.
Okay, I'm I'm just going by some of the reports I I see at the region, where they identify um, you know, investments in different municipalities, for example, uh, or different provinces. Um, uh, there's a whole range of of, and they actually, the region puts a percentage of their investments in each of those categories, so you know that they've got five percent in one in uh, whatever, one, one province. Is that sort of what we're looking?
Yeah, so we'd be looking to see, so I do, I'd have to prepare a cash forecast to see what we have available that we could, because we, what we will be doing is locking these funds into specific terms. So we'll, we'll be investing in the short term, long term, um, and they'll mature at different dates, but we have to make sure that we still have money on hand to manage the day-to-day activities. So that might look like three to five million in terms of what we might be able to invest in uh GICs or bonds.
So we are regulated by the municipal act on what we can invest in.
We are, yeah.
And we're allowed to go into bonds, I I'm assuming?
Yeah, there's a lot of options in terms of what what we can do, so we have GICs, bonds, they're all safe, but yeah, there are some options available.
Any other questions? So I'll call a question, all in favor, and that's Carrie. Thank you. Uh, okay, um, Director's update.
Sure, so quick update, so twenty twenty six budgets are underway, uh, we're still in the process of making um a first cut. However, we're making uh great progress and we look forward to sharing more on November twenty seventh. I think that's our first scheduled budget meeting for, for the year, so.
Any questions? No. Okay, uh, for information package, I believe um, uh, councillor, one bring back one is being deferred, I think that's the one with the firefighter certification.
Correct, yeah, yes.
And then you want to bring back municipal tweed, collaborative, actionable, sustainable waste management in Ontario.
Yes, thank you, mayor, um, so researching the landfill in Waterloo region is twenty to twenty-five years of life re- remaining. There is no plan in place as of yet. Um, one option is to extend or expand the landfill. Option two would be to start a new landfill somewhere, which apparently there has not been one um, a new landfill approved in Ontario in quite a while. And option three could possibly be the incinerator option, which is this uh, information package. So I'd like support, just to get that ball rolling, because uh, it's not going to be long and we're going to be looking at either expanding the landfill or another option. Um, an incinerator, I'm guessing to plan something and build would be a minimum ten to fifteen years. So I'm not sure what the, you have more insight from the region, but?
I can give you a little bit of insight.
Yeah.
Um, unless there's other questions. So when I first um, took on this role, this mayor, um, that was uh, I think back then the landfill uh had a life expectancy of about ten years. And it seems like year after year, the uh, whether it's uh
Recycling or?
Recycling or or innovative work that they've been doing at the, at the uh, at the, at the landfill. Uh, it just seems to keep extending, and I wouldn't be surprised if that twenty-five years eventually extends. We did look at incineration at that time. Um, there's two plants that are available right now, there's one in, I think, in Brampton, and there's another one in uh uh Cortez, I don't know where that is, Cortez.
Uh, it's like east of Toronto.
Okay, so there's those two plants, I did a little bit of digging on this, um. There's a significant ma- amount of uh environmental issues with these plants. When we looked at it, at the region, um, it was determined that the investment, that they would not have enough uh trash in the region to uh maintain one of these plants. They would have to start shipping it in to keep those plants burning at all times, so there was a lot of concerns. Um, and I think it was the power company at the time that uh, that I was a member of or on board for uh, were sort of pushing for something like this, but the region just sort of closed their, closed their eyes on it at the time.
Okay.
Um, you know, if we're moving to one million people in the region, uh, maybe they'll have to have another look, but still, I think it's uh, there's a lot of en- environmental issues with it, um, so I think it I'm, I'm okay to have a look at it.
Right.
But uh
One report I read uh was from uh China, and they actually were buying garbage from other areas to keep.
From us. From us.
To keep their, uh, plant going.
Uh, uh, at one time they were buying from us. I'm not sure what they still do. Tim might know that from just planning with the region.
Uh, I don't know that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That puts you on the spot. Anyway.
Anyways, I just think that if, you know, Kitchener had the landfill and now Waterloo has landfill, Cambridge had a landfill. Someone else in the region has to take their turn and I'd hate to see it take up farmland.
Oh, you're the one. Anyway, I, I'm okay with the support moving forward with, uh, at least to have the study, to have a look at it, have the region have a look at it. And I know what the answer might be. I'll just leave it at that. Everybody else is okay with that then. And for later support. Okay, good. Uh, unfinished business. Um, next meeting, October twenty eighth. Maybe the whole November fourth, council meeting November twenty fifth. Council Wagner, motion to adjourn, all in favor? That's carried.